And against I brought my Cuban cigars from where I from. Where'd you get these cigars?
The vine.
It's kind of man, it's not where she likes it.
They're pretty good.
Wait.
We're doing like.
He's called.
I think that was in Mexico.
Counter.
Yeah.
She's he's just excited.
I was here before you. Did you walk right?
That's the invisible.
Sounds like a new bad.
Louis was up.
I ran. So like around you.
I knew it.
Let it grow, sir.
That's my one. A cat. One. Totally.
We got real friendly on that.
Let's let's.
Regardless.
But it was not.
And there's a lot more trending to do.
Ah, you have a lot less money, you got those buildings there. Cut off, cut your soul. He didn't realize.
Yeah, well. And I'll have blue legs for a long time.
That's what she has.
Thank you.
Totally.
I appreciate it.
That's right.
That's there.
You're like.
And be careful you are.
I'm not gonna say that.
Say do better than.
Top to the highest.
Like, and you have good legs.
Can you know?
Yes.
Thank you.
I don't know what much interaction with you, I just keep hiding.
All right, seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting of the Angola Common Council. Do order. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Coffee.
Present.
Councilmember Olson.
Here.
Councilmember Sharkey.
Here.
Councilmember Rowe.
Here.
Councilmember McDermott.
Here.
Good evening, everybody. We, a couple of weeks or so ago, late April, I was invited to a luncheon in Indianapolis. Several hundred people were there. It was hosted by the Greenways Foundation. The Greenways Foundation, if you're unfamiliar with it, does a fantastic job of supporting trails throughout all of Indiana. Uh, they do fundraising, they do grants, they do lobbying, uh, and they do a fantastic job. Indiana, you really, uh, putting a lot of trails all over the state. They also award, uh, certain projects and officials, uh, and recognize them during the luncheon. And, and the person that received the award could not go, so I went and accepted for her. They have an outstanding local government, outstanding trail project, outstanding corporation, outstanding trail group. But our Jennifer Sharkey was awarded the Outstanding Trail Advocate for the year. It was my honor to go and accept this award in your behalf. And I now pass it on to you. Congratulations.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything you'd like to?
Thank you, and really it's a team effort, so thank you to the city, the Stevan County Trails Group, Stevan County Government, all of us in it together to get the Pokobash Trail to come to realization. Thank you.
Thank you.
You, you were awarded for what you've done in the past, what you're currently doing, and what we know you'll be doing in the future. So it was a very well-deserved award. Thank you for everything you do. Uh, this is also, if you don't know, uh, Public Service Recognition Week. And I have a proclamation here for all our employees of the city. In honor of the City of Angola employees, whereas residents are served every single day by our employees, these unsung heroes do the work that keep our city thriving. Their tireless efforts are often unseen, and whereas, whereas, it's made day in and day out, our employees provide the diverse services needed and those requested by our residents with efficiency and integrity. And whereas, public employees take not only jobs, but also many risk their lives each day in service to the people of our city, our county, and the thousands of visitors to our community every year. They make a difference every day without recognition, and whereas, without these public servants, servants at every level and in every department, the continued daily tasks that are necessary to keep our city healthy and vibrant would be impossible. Therefore, I, Dave Martin, Mayor of Angola, do hereby, hereby proclaim May 6th to the 12th, 2024, as Public Safety Recognition Week in Angola, Indiana. And I encourage all citizens to thank our employees for the work they do. And, and on a private, personal note, I've always known that our workforce is second to none. We've got the greatest workforce, and I've always, as a council member, I always knew that. But as I took over the mayor's office, it, it took that appreciation to a whole new level. When you work with these folks day in and day out, and you see their dedication, tireless effort to do what's best for our city, being unselfish and going above and beyond the call of duty, every one of them. They just do a fantastic job, and I couldn't be more proud of the workforce that we have and the employees that we have. We're so lucky and blessed in this community. And as I travel around and I speak to other mayors and other communities, every time I do, it drives that same point home. I hear the, some of the nightmare stories that some of the other mayors have to deal with, and we don't have that. It just, everything works good. Uh, we will be hosting a lunch for our employees this Wednesday, uh, over at the, uh, Public Safety Building, the Fire Department, the backside of the Fire Department, from 11 to 1:00. All our employees are welcome to come over and have lunch on, on the city. We've got a nice menu, we've got a food truck, uh, coming in, and we look forward to having, uh, lunch with them. Now, unfinished business, ordinance 1752, 2024, and ordinance amending the zoning maps. This, did I miss something? Oh, yes, I missed it again. Request approval, the, um, uh, April 15th minutes.
Okay.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I can't stop writing notes on my agenda, because I end up covering up an item and then miss it every time. Uh, now ordinance number 1752, 2024, and ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of Angola, Indiana, at 221 West Stocker, second reading.
Move to approve the ordinance.
Second.
A motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And we will do third reading, uh, this evening, ordinance 1752, 2024, and ordinance amending the zoning map of the City of Angola, Indiana, to, uh, 121 West Stocker.
Mr. Mayor. Having reviewed the recommendation of Plan Commission, taking into account the comprehensive plan, current conditions, and character of structures and use in each district, most desirable use of land in its current and proposed zones, conservation of property values throughout the city, responsible growth enveloped, I move to adopt the proposed zoning change.
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Uh, discussion regarding the traffic studies for the intersection of East Randolph and Cross Street and South Superior and West Pleasant Street. There's been a lot of emails going back and forth, the Traffic Commission and attorneys. Uh, this is entirely up to the council, and I truly believe that. Whatever the council, the opinion is, uh, is, is fine with me. As far as I'm concerned, the council, because of home rule, uh, can do whatever they want with the traffic and put whatever stuff plans everyone for. Other than that, I'll keep my opinions quiet.
I, uh, will have to let you, Mr. Mayor, and the council know that it would be, I cannot support the changes because the people we have in place is protocol. And I think once we deviate from what past practice has been, and we can open ourselves up to some situations where we'll have, could have more stoplights, we'll set a precedent, and so I just cannot support the changes. Also known, talking to some of the city employees, that, um, for example, snow removal is very difficult to get through a four-way stop, even though most people aren't out when the snowplow, plows are, but they, they, they do need to get through and maintain public safety for, for everyone involved. I would suggest that we put a, um, speed monitor, especially perhaps on the first two or three weeks of school, um, to, to monitor the situation in terms of speed, but, uh, and I think we walk a slippery slope when we, uh, the folks that, uh, did the study, it was apparent to me that, uh, four-way stops are now warranted.
So your motion is to deny both requests, is that?
I'm just stating that I, um.
That's not, that's not a motion.
It's not a motion.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, didn't we at the last discussion, at least as far as the Randolph Street, approved that with a three to two vote to move forward to a first reading of?
On the Randolph Street, I believe you are correct, there was a three to two vote to approve that particular intersection, and the other intersection was tabled. Do you want to take the intersections independently and come to a conclusion? You want to do?
We still have to create an ordinance, have a three, three reading type.
Well, the ordinance already exists, we're just a matter of amending the ordinance. So, so if we have a, a, an approval, correct me if I'm wrong, yeah, we have an approval to put the East Randolph Street in on one reading, takes three to, to, to make the change. The ordinance will eventually reflect those changes. So you want to do the East Randolph and Cross Street independently, since you already have a three to two vote to?
We already signed with it independently, so I think we have to.
Okay, so we'll, we'll handle motions independently on the two intersections. So let, let's deal with the East Randolph and Cross Street, where we have one reading to approve it. So do we have a motion on that intersection?
I would move that we, of a second reading, approve the four-way stop at that intersection. Correct me if I'm wrong, Kim, does that an ordinance still have to be presented for three readings? I mean, this isn't a reading of that.
Right.
That change. I'm troubled.
Well, the, the entire, all the intersections in the entire town are, are codified in one ordinance, and that's the one that would be amended. What's the proper procedure to do that, Kim?
Well, the proper procedure would be to have a, a written ordinance, uh, draft of an ordinance before the, before the, uh, body, uh, for them to consider. But when it comes to something as, as straightforward as a stop sign, yeah, that ordinance can be prepared after a positive or a favorable.
So we need three?
You, you do need three readings for?
To, to, up for intersection.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Nice.
And I, we don't. So let, let's go back and revisit, if you don't mind, the East Randolph and Cross Street. What's your, what's your flavor to, to, to move with that intersection? We have one reading to approve it, installing this stop.
I would make a second, uh, make the motion again for the second reading.
And the positive to?
Positive.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the East Randolph and Cross Street?
I'll just say that we have a city code that says that the city shall follow the Indiana MUTCD. We have a state code of the Indiana code, um, that says we need to follow the MUTCD. The MUTCD states that stop signs in this situation need to be supported by an engineering study, and the engineering study does not support it.
I disagree. I'll read the section. And Amanda had this in the letter that she sent to us, sent to us. Indiana Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices for Streets and Highways, standard. And there's a definition of standard, that's the black letter law. The manual describes application of traffic control devices, but shall not be a legal requirement for their installation. One A point oh nine. And it's very clear, if it isn't clear, if it's ambiguous, then the home rule comes into play. Any doubt as to the existence of a power of a unit shall be resolved in favor of its existence. So if it's ambiguous, home rule apply. If it isn't, it says that we can do it.
Nice.
It, it says it. I've got it in writing, and, and I got the rules here. It's exactly what it says. Amanda, doesn't it say that?
I disagree with you.
You don't think it says that? You don't think I'm quoting it?
We have a city ordinance that says that we shall follow it. Our city ordinance says we shall follow the Indiana MUTCD.
But we can override any ordinance with another ordinance, right?
It's a legal question.
Well, it's a legal question, and the legal question is yes. You can repeal or override another ordinance. It happens all the time in any legislative body. It's the same body doing it.
Yeah, Kim would have to answer that, but not an attorney.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please.
I've given some, some thought to that question. And for the newer members of the council, perhaps I could introduce myself in my, in my role. I'm, I'm not a legal consultant to the city. Uh, I'm not a lawyer that the mayor hired to help with legal stuff at the city. I was appointed by the mayor to be the department head of the Department of Law. And the reason that's significant is because, like other department heads, fire chief, police chief, engineering department, planning department, I have statutory requirements and duties that I need to follow and live up to. Um, so the law says that I am the lawyer for the city, the entity. But since the city in the, as an entity can't really do anything, it only acts through its boards, commissions, officers, and employees, I am the attorney for each one of those, every department, every, uh, every, uh, office. So including the mayor's office. But most importantly, tonight, I'm the attorney for the city council. So I'm speaking to you as your lawyer. You are my client. Uh, that is a very high bar, and that I take very seriously. I'm required by law to give you the best legal advice that I can. I may not always be right, because I'm human, but I take that duty very seriously. I've been in municipal law for 44 years. Uh, I was the basically unofficial assistant to the city attorney from 1980 to 2000. City attorney was my father. I worked hand, hand in hand with him on many, uh, city issues, steeped in city government. 1980, uh, Mayor Selman appointed me to be city attorney, so I've been the sole city attorney since 1980. Or, I'm sorry, 2000, since 2000. Municipal law is unique, a unique body of law. Uh, it's, 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 it's a specialty. Uh, you have to really live it and breathe it to become aware of some of the subtle rules and influences that, that govern legal issues that come before the city. And I think I'm tuned into those. Um, the question that I was wrestling with was, can this city council put up a stop sign without the approval or the recommendation of the city engineer? And my answer is yes. There are two types of actions that the city council can make. One is ministerial, and one is discretionary. Those are the two broad groups of actions that you guys take. Ministerial acts are acts that take no deliberation, really no thought, no analysis, any bureaucrat could do them. Things such as paying the city's bills. If there's a lawful bill presented to the city, you must approve its payment. There's no, there's no, maybe we should, maybe we shouldn't. You have to do it. You have to conduct regular meetings. You have to submit a budget by a certain deadline. There's just no question about that. Discretionary acts, on the other hand, are really what you've been elected to perform. And discretionary acts in the law require deliberation, discretion, and judgment. That's what the people imbued in you when they elected you. Discretionary acts that might come before a city council would include annexing territory. Should we bring more territory into the city? That's a judgment call, that's a decision that you're called upon to make from time to time. Should we run a water line to Pocagen? Pros and cons, you weigh it, you make a decision. Determining what numbers go into the city budget. You got to meet the budget deadline, that's ministerial, but what numbers you put in there, that's discretionary. You have to use your best judgment on that. Whether to buy a new fire truck. You don't have to buy a new fire truck. But maybe it's good for the city if you do, so you deliberate, you use your judgment, you make that decision. I did pencil in whether to give the mayor a raise to the discretionary. But that's, that's important, because the courts will not, they're very reluctant to second guess the act, a deliberative act of a governmental entity. They say over and over in the law, we will not substitute our judgment for that of the elected officials. We will not second guess that of the elected officials. The elected officials know their city, they know their neighborhoods, they know what the people want. They were elected by the people to make these decisions. So it's a very hands-off approach when you're doing a discretionary act. Discretionary acts that concern streets, vacating a street, that's a big deal. Making a public street private property for no compensation, just giving it away, removing it as a street. We've done that for Trine several times. We've done that for the hospital most recently. Uh, we've done that occasionally over the years for odd little streets in, in the city. Another discretionary act concerning cities, whether cars can park on both sides of the street, or only one side of the street, or on neither side of the street. Those are discretionary decisions that you're called upon to make, and you make them regularly. Deciding whether a street's one-way or two-way. Darling Street, traditionally always one-way. I was kind of sad to see that made two-way. That's my old neighborhood. But it's two-way now, as, as is Superior. You made that, made by you, I mean, city council. You made that decision, that's a discretionary decision. Nobody's going to second guess that, and if they do, they'll lose. Putting up a stop sign. People call their city council person, hey, my kids don't feel safe, and my dog doesn't feel safe, uh, traffic's too crazy, we'd like a stop sign. That's a discretionary act. That cannot be taken from you by one line in a federal, 800-page federal manual on technicalities of what a stop sign looks like. On the Manual on Uniform Traffic Signals and Codes, which she cites as Mufader Muchad, has a provision in it that seems to suggest that a stop sign can't be put up without an engineering study approving it. That cannot, a federal, a, a, a regulation in a federal technical manual cannot remove your authority to make a discretionary act. Lawyers are used to conflicts. It doesn't surprise me that one thing says one thing, one thing says another. My job is to advise you what I think would govern and control, and what is the proper course to follow. And I do not believe that a federal manual on traffic regulations can remove the discretionary authority from this body. Now, it can impose ministerial requirements. Stop sign has to be eight-sided. Stop sign has to be made of metal, probably a certain type of metal. Stop sign has to be painted red. Stop sign has to have block letters that are capital that say stop, and have any fancy script. Uh, there's good reason for that, and any court would say, well, you can't, you, you can't put up a green round stop sign that would, that would cause havoc. So you have to, if you put up a stop sign, you have to follow those rules. But, but, but you cannot give up, and you have not lost your discretionary judgment if it does say in some federal manual, or even a state technical manual, that you have to, you can only do it if the, uh, city engineer approves. You were, you were elected to make decisions on behalf of the citizens, all the citizens, especially your constituents. You can vacate a street. You can determine where you park on that street. You can determine where the traffic flow is on that street, and you can determine whether to put up a stop sign or not. And I, I preface these remarks with my status as city attorney, because I want you to understand that I'm your lawyer, I'm advising you, lawyer to client, that this is the law, and that's the way I think it would play out. On the other hand, as a lawyer, as your lawyer, if you decide not to take my advice, I will support you and defend you in any decision that you make. Uh, reasonable people can differ, uh, and I won't be offended. But I feel very strongly that you have the power and the authority and the duty to make these discretionary decisions about stop signs. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second.
Yes, I'll just make one more comment, so with the, the question of can we or can't we? We can establish stop signs per our city attorney. Um, in these situations, I guess we're talking about the one situation. Um, I would say from a licensed professional engineering standpoint, that we need to look at the safety of the public when they are traveling on the roadways and installing those signs appropriately, and in the appropriate locations, so that we're not placing signs all over the community arbitrarily, and that they are supported by traffic engineering principles. Um, so with that, that's my, um, discussion for this topic.
Ready for the question?
I just think it's common sense that if this were to go through, there could be other neighborhoods that will be knocking at our door as well. And, um, again, I think it's difficult to do a lot of things that we currently do in the city if we have to stop every, at every other intersection or every intersection. Um, that's, that's my feeling.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? And I think it would be totally valid for you to base your decision on the fact that the engineering, uh, department did a study and recommended against it. That's, that's fine with me, and that's, that's exercising your discretion. Uh, I, I simply wanted you to know that it was my strong opinion that you have the authority to do that without her approval, or recommendation, but, but certainly it's an important, uh, recommendation and should be given the heavy weight.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying, we're back up here, and we're talking the East Randolph and the Cross Street. We have a motion to install, make it a four-way stop, for clarity. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
You got the?
But do a roll call.
You want, okay.
Roll call.
Number Coffee?
Aye.
Number Olson?
Aye.
Number Sharkey?
Nay.
Number Rowe?
Aye.
Aye.
Number McDermott?
Nay.
Let's go on to the South Superior and West Pleasant Streets, and now once again, and a motion for that intersection, and this is the first vote on that intersection.
Able, uh, yes, to install that four-way stop.
Motion to install a four-way stop. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this intersection? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
Are you happy with it?
Uh, roll call, please.
All right.
Number Coffee?
Aye.
Number Olson?
Aye.
Number Sharkey?
Nay.
Number Rowe?
Aye.
Number McDermott?
Nay.
Thank you. I love democracy. It may, may seem like a small thing, but this, this is, it's very good, it's very healthy, and I, I love democracy. Thank you all. Do we have any other unfinished business? Go on to new business, ordinance number 1753, 2024, additional appropriations of, uh, ordinance for the City of Angola, Indiana, the ARP Coronavirus Financial Recovery Fund, the first reading. Uh, Ryan, you want to give a short explanation of what we're doing here?
Yeah, um, so the ARP Coronavirus Physical Recovery Fund, it's what's remaining of the ARP funds that were, uh, provided to the city by the federal government. Uh, we're on a time clock now to get these, uh, projects under contract by the end of the year. Um, these weren't originally placed in the budget for this year because there was some uncertainty about whether we would be doing an additional at the end of last year to, to get. about whether we would be doing an additional at the end of last year to, to get these projects covered last year, but nothing went out to bid. So at this point, we are just appropriating the rest of the funds so that we can get them under contract for the rest of our infrastructure projects that we now are ready to proceed with, so.
Two projects, I believe that we're going to fund with this, both in utility, both in wastewater utility, the East on the lift station removal and elimination. We opened bids for that, I think the last council meeting, $700,000, changes, I recall. And the other half, the total amount is 1.4. 1.4 million. The other portion of it will go to a data, data system that we've been needing to replace for quite some time. We haven't done it because of the, primarily because of the expense, but long-term, this is a project that needs to be handled. So, and that, and that is also in the wastewater utility.
It's a use it, lose it situation?
Yeah, it has to be, the projects have to be under contract by the end of this year, or the funds get re-sent back to the federal government. So we've been looking internally at the best use of these funds. We have kind of a big puzzle, a lot of different issues with our utilities, but these are the programs that we've identified, or the projects we've identified, the easiest and quickest that we can get under contract and get it taken care of.
Long story short, things kind of got stalled out because of the East of Lift Station project. We, last year, we ran into what could have been a grant opportunity for that. So we went through that process and did not receive the grant. But then, when it was, it actually came in far less than we thought it would come in. So it's just created some uncertainty, but regardless, water and wastewater infrastructure was in our, our plan to begin with, and those are the things that we're trying to get under contract.
Ryan, this, this is approved to do this. When would construction start? I think Easton, but Easton's ready to roll, I believe.
I sent out the notice to proceed today for that project, so.
It's like, look, you remove that little station right there on.
Yes.
Where the road is, and so there could be some minimal disruption of that road.
The road will be closed.
For.
I wouldn't call it that.
The duration of the project.
How long's that got to be?
I think the contract, they have 180 days.
Oh, that's. I can, I, I, I move on.
And Ryan, do these funds need to be expended by 2025?
Needs to be under contract by the end of 2024, and, but construction needs to be completed by the end of 2025, beginning of 2025.
I think it's 2026.
2026.
Yes, okay, thank you.
You approve. And motion second, any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Request approval, the agreement for professional engineering services with Butler, Fairman, Cyper, for the Pokimash Trail project in the amount not to exceed $343,760.
I'd love to approve the request, the agreement.
Amanda, you want to say anything? Any more discussion on this?
So this would take care of basically the rest of that project through construction. So this will be for the Ride of Waste Services, construction inspection for the rest of our trail. So once this is done, our entire Pokimash Trail within the city ordinance will be complete.
Wow. Amanda, is this, is this the same company that the county's using that's working south of town? Is this a different district type, something that'll be?
Yeah.
Okay.
Kind of.
Yeah, that sounds.
Joint efforts.
Yeah.
Construction primarily funded through the next level.
Next level charter grant.
Achieved.
Yeah. So this, this number is, is the entirety of the engineering services. Because we got a grant, we will only have to pay 20% of that, the way Ryan budgets, we budget it all.
Do you have a, do you have a, how, how long the distance is, the schools to the end of town?
From the school?
From, from, from its end now.
Oh, for this section, about 1.1 mile.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Review and determine if IMP Realty LLC leased to Patrick Industries, Inc., located at 409 Growth Parkway and 101 Industrial Drive is or is not in compliance with a statement of benefits for real estate improvements, resolution 2015 six, I want to say this, 666, I'll just say it that way, eight years.
I find that we find Patrick Industries in compliance with the statement of benefits for real estate improvements.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Request appointment, reaffirmment of Libby Heison to the Economic Development Commission for a term of 2124 to 131, 2028.
Did anybody ask her if she wanted it? She might be watching. Yeah. Of course.
I have moved to approve if I, if you sitter. Economic Development Commission.
Second. Motion second, to repoint our good friend, Libby Heison. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Request approval for the Street Department to dispose of a 1997 International Truck, asset number 455 via auction on GoDeals.com.
I just have to make a comment here that I'm absolutely amazed that we still have a 1997 International Truck in our fleet, but I will make that, that motion to approve the selling of a 1997 International Truck.
1997.
Gump.
A motion a second, and they were using it for not too long ago. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
How many miles?
70,000?
Close to.
Yeah, close to 70.
Not too bad. Heck, that's good for another five years.
Get it, get it, it's not good. Get early, bid off.
Or is that fun around, Ryan?
City vibes as well.
Yeah. That's a hard. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Reports, Ryan, do you have anything for us?
Nothing for me, Mayor.
You have anything?
No report.
Mr. Mayor? Very good speak, or speech to see, by the way. Thank you for the clarity you provided.
Thank you, Mayor.
Planning?
No report.
Fire?
No report.
Police?
No report.
Water?
No report.
Street?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Amanda, I'm in engineering.
Just an update on the Pocagin project, so I'm sure you guys are aware, but the city is supplying water and sewer services to Pocagin State Park and Trine Rec State Park. So the, the surveying's underway, design is underway, anticipated bidding and letting of the project will be this fall. So this is also under kind of a state time crunch on their funding mechanism. So look to have construction potentially for the winter months on this project.
The state is using the same funds, the same coronavirus funds, so they have to get this under contract by the end of the year, just like we, in our project. Anything else?
That's it.
Very good. Nothing? Okay. Uh, request approval, allowance counts payable, voucher, $8,345 through $68,624 totaling $1,452,452 and 71 cents.
We approve. Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any other new businesses evening? Anybody else have anything?
I congratulate Chief Call with the cool article in the paper with the author sitting right here, so. Very nice article.
Did any of you go down and watch? It was very enlightening, I really, he's got a great program going down here. I love what he's doing, bringing on the next generation.
How many counts school?
They graduate next Friday, so that'll be, that we're finishing them up, so. Have a couple burns this week, and then next Friday, I think we're gonna do it at the station next Friday at 1:00.
Not this Friday, the following.
Correct.
Keep conversations with Council, County Councilor Crest and Harder at that, at presentation, is that his name? Once again, make sure you thank our city employees, please. They do a great job for us, show them their appreciation, well deserved. And one last point, it is election tomorrow. Get out and vote. So far, voter turnout, I've been told, it's fairly late, so apathy is set in, so make sure everybody gets out and votes. We are adjourned, the next meeting will be Monday, May 20.